Of August 3, 2023 to order, roll call please.
Alderman Ains?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Sismarcy? Alderman Harwood?
Here.
Alderman Hardywood?
Here.
Here, I declare a quorum. Please stand, join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July 20, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I have no written communication case. I do have a couple citizens that would like to speak this evening. It's on matters of the agenda, should we just wait till then? Okay, Ms. Dolores Canionas? Yes, over there. Ellen, is the microphone on?
Thank you for this time to talk to you. I live at 197 Catawba. I've lived there for almost 30 years. And we are the, I'm one of the two houses that live at the edge of the retention pond. And I have a lot of concerns about that because I recently found out that they're going to put a walkway alongside our houses there. And there's a few things I want to touch on, safety, privacy, efficiency, and maintenance of this sidewalk. I babysit my three grandchildren, my three girl-grandchildren, and they usually play in the yard. I have a dog. And there's going, with this walkway being put in there, it's going to take away from our privacy and our security. I can't have the children playing in there without worrying who's coming and who's going. There's going to be unknown people walking there, walking with their dogs. And it's just going to be an invitation for these people to come along our walkway, our yard there. Now, the point is, if there's not going to be a fence put in by the village, then why put the walkway? Who's it going to benefit? Certainly not us. Not my neighbor either. We have grandchildren and I'm concerned. And I wanted to just talk about something, I won't take long, but a few years ago, there was an incident, we were in our yard, the girls are playing, I was working in my garden, my husband was working on the grill, and this policeman comes in the yard and he said, "Did we see any man running through the yards?" And we said, "No." At the time, there could not be no fences put in. And he says, "Well, for the time being, I would suggest you go in the house." And we did, I mean, we were scared. The point is, a few hours later, the policeman was kind enough to come back and say, "Well, you can come out now, the guy was apprehended." My point is, with that walkway, with no fence put up, no privacy fence put up, we're open to all these unpleasant people. I mean, maybe they're not all going to be unpleasant, but, you know, it's going to be different people walking there, strangers that we don't know. And the privacy is just going to be taken away from me and my family. I just don't understand the logic of it. Who's going to benefit by this walkway? Certainly not us. And as far as efficiency, I mean, the cost that is going to put the walkway up, why won't they just put it towards some part else in the retention pond? Like the east corner of the retention pond that needs work, that needs to be worked on so the water could flow better. Now, nobody knows better than Catawba and Windsor how that area floods when there's heavy rain. I mean, we've had water come almost halfway up to our driveway, and that's how bad it gets. Something needs to be done to make it more efficient, not beautiful, not convenient for somebody to walk to the train station. For what? They made their choices where they live. If the walkway's going to be built, then build it along the other side of it, not past the house, not past the residents that live there and have families. We have a dog. We've had recently kids walking with their dogs on our grass, and, you know, our dog stays in our yard. How do I know another dog is not going to come and attack our dog? That's not fair to us, and we've been there 30 years. You need to put the money where it needs to be worked on, where it's going to benefit more for the retention pond and the people in the village or that benefit from that. The other thing is maintenance. Even if you put a sidewalk up there, who's going to maintain that sidewalk in the winter when there's ice? Who's going to maintain that? Accidents happen. That's not going to stop them. You know what they're going to do? Without a wall, they're going to come and they're going to walk on our property, on our grass. And that's not fair to us. We've maintained that piece of the land even when the bushes were there. We had the bushes at our own expense taken down. It cost us $500. And we built that grass up and we nurtured that grass without the help of anybody, not from the village. And now they're going to put that walkway up? I totally disagree. Don't make it a park. It's not a park. It's supposed to be for water retention and nothing else. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Mayor, could I?
Sure.
Brad Townsend, resident, not as long in that neighborhood as my neighbors Juan and Dolores, but been there, resident here for 27 years and 25 years there in the Tall Oaks subdivision. Really, most of what I was going to bring up here, Dolores has already addressed, but maybe I could just emphasize a couple of things here, maybe a couple of different things possibly. One was that I just want to thank, I put a note there, handwritten note on each one that I gave you, just thanking the mayor and the alderman's staff for moving ahead with this project, you know, getting that grant and going ahead with it because that Tall Oaks basin, it wasn't working right. I remember we even talked about it at an award meeting that was held last year. And anything that can be done to make that better as far as the basin itself, that's great. The other thing is, and I think this may be one of your change order items on your agenda tonight, is the outfall, you know, going down that railroad ditch going to the east. I mean, every engineer that I ever talked to or anybody else has pointed out that, you know, if that basin is improved, and it looks like the work that's been done there is pretty good, it won't matter a whole lot in terms of the discharge of that water if it's being, you know, bottlenecked there at that ditch along the CP rail or Metro rail, whoever's got jurisdiction over that. And so anything you can do, you know, through an agreement with the railroad, I think there might be an agreement in place to send the crews in there because I don't think you can rely on the railroad doing this. Anything you can do to get that done properly and get that water moving down and away from there will be great because it's my understanding, or what I recollect, is that there's probably 500 properties, 500 lots, that are being served by that basin, and many people don't even realize they are further to the south. People in Tall Oaks know about it, but it's to Sunnyside, you know, past Windsor and even further down, people are benefiting from this. So anything that can happen there would be great. So again, thank you for that. So the ditch, though, seems to be the main thing as far as what I'm concerned. But I do share my neighbor's concerns about the safety and the privacy. That sidewalk, you know, I can see the community benefit of a sidewalk going along there, but at the same time, whether there's a sidewalk there or not, I think there is a safety and privacy issue because already, even before this project, people were trespassing across our yards. They walk across there, they ride bikes across there, there's dirt bikes, motorbikes. We've had about anything we can think of. Our former neighbor actually tried to put up signs and some kind of a light barricade on one side there at one time to try to stop people from coming across there. So, and that was even when we had the private hedge up there, which thankfully that was taken down because it was way past its prime. So if you can give some thought to, and I think that may be an item also on your agenda, that whatever you do with the idea of pedestrians or bicyclists going across that basin, because this is different than many other detention or retention basins in town, is that this is one where people do walk or travel from east to west or west to east pretty frequently. So that's a big concern. My grandchildren play in our yard too, so I definitely share Dolores's comments on that personally. So that's about all I have to say. Hopefully, as you're considering what to do, as you're getting near the end of this project, to fine tune it and take our concerns into account would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to address the council? Okay. Under Mayor's report, just a big thank you to the staff, police, Public Works, staff for Prairie Fest, a lot of hard work, successful weekend, with the exception of Friday, of course, with the rain out, but it's okay. You guys did a great job and we commend you. Next, appointment of Nicholas Lucania to the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee for a two-year term commencing on August 3, 2023 and expiring April 30, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, Mr. Mermus, manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item, I also would like to thank the staff for all their hard work for Prairie Fest 23, also the City Council for funding it and all their hard work for Prairie Fest 2023, and most importantly, the residents of the city of Wooddale. I would like to thank the most who make the fest what it is. That concludes my report.
And one other note on the fest, there is a survey online that residents can take. You can tell us what you like, what you don't like. If you could please fill that out, that'd be great. Next, consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve an ord, yeah, to approve an ordinance approving a sales tax sharing agreement in connection with the planned unit development located 364 to 376 East Irving Park Road, Wooddale. Do I have a?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Harwood?
Yes.
Alderwoman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarcy?
Yes.
Alderman Hardywood?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Currielli?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Jacob?
I have several reports. Ellen's going to make a presentation, so we, and then after that, could we, Pat, could I make a motion to approve all of these at one time, or do I have to go through each one?
Mr. Bond?
Go through each one. I would recommend having a motion on the floor in the discussion here, Mr. Lang do his presentation, as do I.
Okay.
The first item.
The first, well, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions, LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin retrofit project in an amount not to exceed $30,000. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Lane, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be discussing several change orders associated with the Tall Oaks Detention Basin retrofit project. These change orders arose from unforeseen conditions that were discovered during construction as well as some additional surveying work that was done by the contractor within the metro right-of-way. So my presentation will cover all five change orders. Confusingly, I'll begin with numbers four and five because they're located within the basin. The existing basin had a concrete-lined channel down the middle which drained to a catch basin, which then drained to a storm sewer, which led to the outfall of the basin. This storm sewer is not on our GIS AT list and was constantly underwater, so we were unable to televise it. When we were able to uncover it, it was discovered that it's a six-inch pipe, which is far too small to drain the amount of water that we're looking to drain. So we recommend removing that pipe, increasing it to a 12-inch, shortening the length, adding a flared end section, and then regrading the open flow channel to reach that outfall, providing some additional capacity, as well as, you know, reducing that length of pipe reduces the need for, you know, the potential for outage blockage later on. The other change order, that was change order five, the other change order, number four, is in the southwest corner of the basin. There's two structures there that are really unlike anything I've seen in any other project. The pipe comes into a concrete box, which essentially just fills up with water and then overtops into the basin. It's a very strange setup, so we propose to remove the end section of pipe, put in a new section with a proper bell section, and attach a flared end section so it can drain out properly.
Excuse me. That, that last one, that's the one right on the curve there, right? That's the inlet that I said years ago was wrong.
Correct. Those are the outfalls for the storm sewer systems on Potter Street and Catawba Avenue.
Right, so we're going to correct that finally.
Correct.
Great.
You're correct, are you going to correct it?
No. We're going to correct it with these change orders.
Yeah. Good.
And then moving on to the other three, which are all in the metro right-of-way. This red box there shows the box culvert, which crosses underneath the Metro Railroad. The area leading up to this box culvert is included in the original contract. The contractor is going to grade it, lower the overflow elevation of the berm, so it's lower than the storm sewers on Potter and Catawba, which means that those won't flood. The reason they're flooding now is because the overflow berm for the basin is higher, so it's holding water back from going into the metro ditch, so we're correcting that as part of the contract. But as we were able to get closer to this box culvert, if you can see that picture.
One second. Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
I was just saying, what is the blue hose or pipe, what is that?
That's bypass pumping. They're pumping out the water from the basin to get it on the other side of the culvert because as you can see, there's about two to two and a half feet of sediment built up at the bottom of that pipe. This pipe that's in the bottom of the picture is the outfall for the basin, and that's lower than the top of that sediment level. So water will flow backwards into the basin before it overtops that sediment. So the change order number one is to remove that sediment and flush out that concrete box culvert.
Alderman Currielli?
Was this something Metro was supposed to do, and then we're taking it over, something new?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
This is Metro's infrastructure. They have not acknowledged that there's even a problem out there at all, really. It took months for them to come out and do any bit of dredging. We appreciate their cooperation in granting us the maintenance agreement, which allows the city to go on to Metro right-of-way and make improvements and maintain those in the future. But Metro has not done anything to address this in any of the years that I've been here.
But follow-up, Alderman Currielli?
For this work, do we need their permission?
We already have their permission. I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you. We already have their permission in the form of the maintenance agreement, which was previously approved.
Mr. Bond?
And just as a reminder to the council, that was unprecedented. Metro doesn't give an agreement for anything with respect to their property, so, you know, kudos to Director Lang in getting it accomplished. It took a little time and effort to get it to happen, but that's the only way that this would have been possible, is if they allowed, otherwise, we don't just have the ability to go on Metro property and undertake work. So this was, that was a huge hurdle to come across at this time.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. And thank Mr. Lang and staff for being aggressive on this, but just for clarity, we touch it, we own it, is kind of where this is at. So that is now ours to maintain and take care of into perpetuity, is what I'm hearing.
Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're not necessarily making any improvements other than cleaning out the existing infrastructure. Metro would still be responsible, in my opinion, for their existing infrastructure, but the real key to the city performing the works as opposed to Metro is kind of the timing. They're not going to drop everything and come out and clean this out for us. We have a contractor who has the equipment mobilized on site, so we'd like to get this done in short order so the basin can function as intended, and we can't plant any of the seeds or the plugs if the basin's not able to drain water, so.
Alderman Woods?
I get all that, I'm not arguing any of that, but obviously, we've been after them for as long as I've been sitting up here, which is a little bit of time. They haven't done anything or next to nothing, so us improving it and the language of the maintenance agreement, I'm assuming that this is going to be ours to take care of, to make sure that it functions.
I would say that the, if I could, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Lang? Or Mr. Bond, go ahead.
In terms of, is what's our responsibility going to be, or what's going forward is what?
Going forward.
Let's say we had an unwilling participant in making the system work, right? We're improving it. I'm assuming if I call them, when our new improvement, two, five, seven, 10 years from now, there's buildup or something, they're still not going to come out, and we're going to, right? So under this maintenance agreement that we have now, is this maintenance agreement end with the project, or is this maintenance agreement ongoing that we, in the future, now are able to go on to maintain the things that we corrected?
Mr. Bond?
I guess it's. We would be able to go on and maintain those items. Now, at some point in time, they may want to rescind it. We did have discussions of exactly how that would happen, but for now, this will allow us to do the clean out, do the maintenance that needs to be done moving forward.
Right, except anytime we do that, we have to have their flag guys on site, find our mistake, is that correct, Mr. Lang?
That's correct, Mayor, and those costs are built into the change orders.
Right. Any other question? All right, go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Moving on to change orders two and three, both deal with the, as the water crosses through the box culvert, which is now at the left side of the screen. The areas in red are the ditch line, which the water flows to the east. So you can see those areas have been, some additional surveying showed some high spots in those areas, which is restricting flow from the basin. And as you can see, there's invasive species and cattails growing all through there, which are, again, restricting flow. So the contractor recommends grading this area and replanting with the same native seed mix that's going to be inside the basin. So beyond this point, there's actually a good amount of fall, there's, you know, plenty of pitch to get it to move on beyond this point, but there's several high areas throughout this point that are blocking water from flowing away from the basin. So back to the point of why we want to complete this work and not Metro, as I mentioned, the time constraints that we're under, we have a contractor who's on site, who has the equipment and is ready to perform the work, and the other is the quality of work. You can see on the left there is the work done by our contractor, who stripped the land bare and graded nicely to allow water to have a nice wide path to move through. And on the right is the work that Metro did, we're grateful for their response. But what they do is they come out with a mini excavator and they dredge out a small channel, which is inevitably going to get filled in with dirt and weeds in no time, and we'll be right back in the same position. So that's one of the reasons we want our contractor to perform the work. Some of these costs could be offset, as we've discussed already tonight, the sidewalks. You see the proposed sidewalks are the darkly shaded areas here, those weren't eligible for grant funding, they were included as, you know, a way to enhance the public outreach to get some more interaction with the basin, but they're certainly not required. At the very least, I would recommend removing the sidewalk between Catawba Avenue and Central Avenue, as we've, you know, seen some concerns from the residents, and it doesn't really increase walkability around the neighborhood much, as there's a sidewalk just to the south of here on Windsor. That would save, the lump sum for the sidewalks was a little over $39,000, so if you split it in half, it's about $15,000 or $20,000. If you eliminate just one section of the sidewalk and keep the other, and I would defer to the council on whether they want to maintain the sidewalk along the back of the Tall Oaks properties, as that has a privacy fence already, so it's a little more secure and may provide some added walkability to the RTA station.
Hold on. Alderman Messina?
So what happens if we don't do anything?
If we don't do?
We don't do these change orders?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
What's the impact to the project and to these people that are sitting?
The basin would continue to work not as designed, it would hold water, and the water would not go anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the cost aspect. The contract amount was about $389,000. The net of the change orders is just over 112, less the two funding sources we've received. The city share would be about 191,000. If you were to remove the sidewalks, that would lower the city share to about 152,000, and we budgeted 184,000 for this project this fiscal year.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was going back to the sidewalks. And I'm asking because I don't know, I don't regularly walk around there. Occasionally, I know the area a little bit, but isn't part of the reason for the sidewalks. I mean, we're enhancing that area and beautifying it with the rain gardens and everything to make it look good, does that not? I ask the people that are involved there, does that add to the walkability or functionality of that area in general?
So I'll speak on that. The one sidewalk definitely helps you get to the train station.
Which one is?
The one to the west, that one.
That one, okay.
The other one, basically, if you're on Central, you walk around to Windsor and then Catawba, it's three houses. You might save 150 feet of walking, maybe. I have to, but that does, so honestly, I've been driving by, and since the memo came out, I'm like, you know what, I never noticed that there was no fence along those yards. Those yards had just been open to the pond before. Now we're in a sidewalk, you're going to have people right on, you know. It's not a really necessary sidewalk personally, in my opinion, but the council feels different, so be it. If I could? Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Come away from the mic. So there's sidewalk all along this edge of Catawba and Potter Street, which leads down to Windsor down here. There's no sidewalk going east on Potter Street, so this sidewalk really just connects to Central, so really, all you're eliminating is, you know, like the mayor said.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Is that where that central dead ends?
Yeah, it's central dead ends right there.
That little, all right, now that makes a little more.
So there's only three, there's three houses on that little, like, peninsula, whatever you want to call it, between. Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
I was just going, it is a little invasive to those properties there that do not have any fence or any other type of screening for a sidewalk to be passing through their side and rear yards, so. They express that to our engineers, and that's why we're presenting it here tonight.
Right, and if we put the sidewalk there, then we'd have to put some kind of fence there anyways, because when somebody's putting up a building, if they're butting up against residents, we make them put a fence up. So I would imagine we would do the same, but if we didn't put the sidewalk, we don't have to put the fence. Is that correct, Mr. Lang?
I think it would be the proper thing to do to provide screening for these residents.
No, if we don't put the sidewalk, then we don't need the fence.
Correct, correct.
And I know I asked you this, so this does raise the price, but it's still under, once you take out that one sidewalk, what'd you say, we budgeted 185?
184, correct.
Well, that's with the two sidewalks, it's still 30,000 under, but, no, but those, right, the Metro thing's been a big problem. That flared end is a joke, I've said that for as long as I've lived there, because I live on the next block, but when it floods, I usually go over there and I see what's going on. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple different lines. Was there not any retention on this project?
So there's no retention, it's all detention.
You're talking, no, no, he's talking about.
Budget, budget.
Contingency?
Thank you.
I don't recall offhand if there, I believe there is a lump sum contingency of around 20, 30,000, but I'll have to get that information for you. We typically provide contingency within the project.
That's what I thought, and I didn't see any language there. Second is a follow-up, are we close enough to the end of the project to understand if this is like the end of the change orders, this kind of gets us there? Anything big, there might be some little things that pop up, I'm sure.
Mr. Lang?
Yes, the basins have been graded, they've done some additional surveying, really all that's left after making these improvements is to do the seeding and the planting of the plugs, so I can't really foresee many more major changes at this point.
And fixing that flared end, I take it, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods, follow.
So I asked this prior, just to confirm, the city of Wooddale is going to take care of this detention pond from now on, even though we don't own the detention pond, correct?
That is the current, thank you, Mayor, that is the current agreement with. Thank you, Mayor, that is the current agreement with the Tall Oaks Homeowners Association, that we're responsible for maintenance.
So, and little history on that pond, so, the city years ago took that over, there was an agreement and whatnot, it was minimal money, right? But, years later, because we had the discussion here, because that council at that time wanted to give the pond back to the homeowners, and I go, I thought you guys changed something and whatnot, and then all of a sudden, as the discussions, memories started, oh, well, we did take some of the water from the south, and we did add it to this, and, so, how do you give it back to somebody when you make changes? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just to that, so, we already had a formal agreement, that it was our duty to maintain that detention facility.
Right, but the city had the option to opt out of that agreement?
Okay.
Even though, even though they made the changes?
They had an agreement, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Catalano, you were next.
Do we have to make a motion to eliminate the sidewalk?
We haven't gotten to that part on the, that's, it's in one of these, which one is it, number...
It's, it's not included in any of the change orders, it would just be a direction from council, and we would withhold that part.
I'll make the motion to eliminate the sidewalk.
Okay, oh, hold on, Mr. Bond is...
Just from a procedural standpoint, so you're asking that the original motion be amended to include that removal of sidewalk along Catalpa on the basin?
Right, okay.
To the residence.
All right, so, so you want to make an amendment to get rid of the sidewalk, Alderman Jacob, you were the motioner, you agree?
Uh...
To removing the one sidewalk, you're talking?
The one sidewalk, right, so I make sure, okay, yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Okay.
The one along...
Mm-hmm, the east to west oriented sidewalk.
Yeah, the one along the yards. Okay, so, no, no, Randy made the second.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, that's what I had, do you have something different, I mean, we could...
Yeah.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead, follow up?
The, for the sidewalk, so we're, if we're eliminating the one, that's going to not, we're not saving the 39, we're saving half the 39.
It'll be reduced, yeah, by some amount, so we'll have to get what the credit is from the contractor.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I just want to make sure, okay, perfect.
You'll go by feet, right, how many feet divided by?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this one, okay, let's go roll call. Is that the end of the presentation, I'm sorry, Mr. Lang?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. You know what, I just assumed it was, but, okay, go ahead, roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
No.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
This is just for the one, or the whole?
The 30,000, the first one.
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Okay, next, a resolution approving change order number two to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin Retrofit Project in an amount not to exceed $47,367.20, that is my motion.
Back down.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Lang, this, number two is which one, just for clarity?
Just for clarity, native species.
Reshaping sidewalk with extra landscape.
Correct. Number two is reshaping the Metro ditch from where it discharges at the north end to Ash Avenue.
Okay, just for clarity, that's all. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Okay, item number three, a resolution approving a change order number three to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin Retrofit Project in an amount not to exceed $9,093.60, that is my motion.
Back down.
We have a motion and a second, and this one, Mr. Lang, just...
This one is, the Metro dish from Ash Avenue east to Edgewood.
Got it. Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Okay. Next, a resolution approving change order number four to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin Retrofit Project in an amount not to exceed $5,904, that is my motion.
Mr. Lang, do you have a second?
Second.
So this is for the funny-looking, should-be-flared-end sections at Potter and Catalpa.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina, I'm sorry, Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
And Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Okay, next, a resolution approving change order number five to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin Retrofit Project in an amount not to exceed $19,973, that is my motion.
Back down.
Motion and a second, Mr. Lang?
This is for the removal of the six-inch pipe within the basin.
Right. Alderman Messina?
Replacing with a larger 12-inch.
Replacing with a 12-inch pipe, correct.
Right. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Ames?
I have two reports, Mayor, the first report is an ordinance of authorizing the borrowing of funds for the general municipal corporate purposes of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, that is my motion.
Do you have a second?
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second, questions? Roll call, oh, hold on, Alderman Woods?
What, which one of the options are we going with? Those are two options, or...
Mr. Wilson?
Read it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Based upon the intended use, after the transactions go through, this would be a taxable, taxable deal, so taxable would be the correct answer to your question.
So the...
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Five point one eight or three, whatever that number was?
Yeah, it's the...
Mr. Wilson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it's the SOFR, which is the standard overnight Fed funds rate, plus 1 percent. It used to be, we used to peg LIBOR, but that no longer exists, so, that's why we're doing that, so it's that prevailing rate, plus 1 percent, that is correct.
Follow up?
Follow up, so what are we using to pay the interest on this note for three years?
Mr. Wilson?
So, the expected, intended repayment method is going to be either TIF one or TIF three, once this area becomes TIF four. There's porting language, where you can move money around between TIFs, so we're going to do that for the first couple of years, until this area starts to generate increment itself, and then we'll refinance it into a proper TIF revenue bond, and the fees this note, and then pay it with the revenue from the TIF itself.
Alderman Woods, follow up?
Okay, so, so the, presently, it's going to be coming in 400, 450,000 a year to finance this thing, and we believe it's going to be a three-year period, or it maxes to three year, until we can get enough increment out of one of the district's to float the bonds, to convert the line of credit into bonds, is that correct?
Mr. Wilson?
Correct.
Would, was it Alderman Jacob or Messina? Alderman Jacob.
Is, I mean, we're not borrowing, I mean, this is just a line of credit, correct?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, and...
Go ahead, follow up?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, wasn't there a line of credit before with the Itasca Bank? This is with Wooddale Bank and Trust?
Mr. Wilson?
So, this technically, just if you're going through chronologically, would be the third one, we had a $5 million one with Wind Trust that we let go a few years ago, we never exercised anything on that one. We still have the one with Itasca Bank that you're referring to for the property acquisitions along Irving Park Road, and then this would be a brand-new one with Wind Trust.
Follow up, go ahead, Mr. Jacob.
Yeah, just final question, I mean, did we touch base with Itasca Bank to see if we could get better terms with them, by any chance?
Mr. Wilson?
This was, I guess the easiest way to put it is, they, it was too large for them relative to what we have already with them, so it put us over their limit per entity, they have a per-entity limit for loans and notes, and this would have put it over that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so the, back to the, getting the line of credit, or chances to use the line of credit pretty quickly to secure a deal, right, it's not just going to sit...
Correct.
...sit around unused.
No, this one will get used.
And so are there, if I could follow up, my big concern is the, getting to the point where the increment takes care of the bonds that we'll need to extinguish the line of credit, and so that's reliant on market conditions and things happening and moving forward, do we have any language with the people that we're dealing with to use this 8 million to cover any of that? So let's say...
Mr. Bond?
If something didn't, clearer language, if something didn't move forward, right, we're kind of dead in the water with the line of credit, do we have language to cover ourselves?
Mr. Bond?
In the line of credit, obviously, if we don't borrow it or we repay it, but if we're, with respect to the other component of it, yeah, there's going to be some built-in protections to make sure that the money's going toward the intended use, so it advances the public purpose.
Good, follow up?
Yeah, so, I am assuming that it's going to go for the public purpose, that isn't my concern, but if, my concern is more that the development's going to be A, right, and it turns out to be B, which then the increment's going to be less, so, given different economic conditions, if something changes, right, what is our surety that we're going to be able to cover this and not have to go on the hook to pay Hardy Woods for ourselves, or any language, that's what I'm looking at or thinking of.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so, great question, unfortunately, this ordinance that's before you tonight is the authorization to borrow the money, anything like that, I guess unfortunately, fortunately, would be more in an RDA or PUD type of agreement, this ordinance tonight isn't really the instrument for something like that.
Mm-hmm.
You're absolutely correct, that there should be that, and I believe, once we get to the point where the deals are closing and whatnot, then it'll be up to Mr. Bond, his team, and, or Bond Counselor Ice Miller, to make sure that those safeguards are put in there, but this is the authorization to borrow funds, doesn't have anything actually to do with the timeline of development or anything like that, so...
It just makes me nervous.
Yeah, no, valid point.
Have to pre-ask. All right, any other questions? We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
No.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
No.
And that passes.
I have a second report, and I'd like to make a motion for an ordinance amending chapter two of the city of Wooddale Municipal Code regarding provision of Illinois municipal retirement funds benefits to employees and elected officials, that is my motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Or, Mr. Bond, do you want to give a little, go ahead?
Yeah, one of the reasons for this is, we've not updated our code, IMRF did, it used to be a, that, a waiting period, that waiting period is no longer allowed under IMRF rules, so we're just bringing our code in compliance with that, we waited, before we brought an employee on at the IMRF and enrolled them, we waited a 90-day probation period, that's not allowed under IMRF rules or Illinois law, so, all we're doing is updating our personnel policy manual to allow for that to occur.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, and so this update or change, correction, scribner error, whatever legal you want to put on it, this is, this day forward, doesn't affect any issues prior?
Mr. Bond?
Correct, and it was a change in the law, that it just, that the code never got updated, so, it's been in place now, because that was the regulations and the law, I just, nobody ever took a look at it, this does not apply retroactively, this only applies prospectively.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Other business, airport noise, just to let everybody know, CDA did send a letter, another letter to the FAA regarding the flight quiet, so it's, we'll see where that goes. Stormwater commission, nothing at this time, approval list of bills, Alderman Ames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for August 3, 2023, in the amount of $1,577,605.95.
Second. Did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry to catch that. Alderman Catalano, second, questions? Alderman Catalano?
I've got a question on page 65, the Dunham and 2023 road project, on the list of bills.
Go ahead.
I want to ask a question about, are we holding any money back in reference to the grass, because we have an issue with the grass?
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
All over town, right away?
The contractors continuing to attempt to address the deficiency in the landscaping, and we withheld the maximum allowable under our agreement from this payment, which is just over a quarter million dollars.
Follow up?
No.
I do have a follow-up, so, a few years back, we talked about making sure when we do these projects that they put good topsoil on the top, are we, are they doing that? Because, I mean, there's weeds all over the place where they did this work.
Yeah, our engineers are attempting to ensure that the contractor maintains the required specifications, unfortunately, in this instance, I think the problem was a lack lack of initial watering by the contractor. They let the seed sit for a month during the driest, hottest time of the year, before they did any supplemental watering, which allowed the weeds to take over. They've since made an increased effort to address the issue with supplemental waterings, and they've gone back several times and removed some of the weeds and reseeded and have added straw blanket in certain areas, so we're staying on top of them to, to address the issue.
Okay, Alderman Sismarsky?
Now, Director Lang, the Itasca Shoot Project, has that all been done? Is it, the list, punch list done? Because a lot of the grass has now regrown and a lot of weeds and a lot of dead grass.
Mr. Lang?
We've, we've supplied this punch list to the contractor. They have not provided us with an update yet as to how many of those items they have checked off. I haven't seen them in town lately, and the landscaping continues to be the major issue, which we've been working pretty much directly with the subcontractor for, but there are still some outstanding punch list items.
Right, thank you.
But we do have retainage still.
Correct, this is not the final payment.
Right.
It's a partial.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, this is a general question relating to this line item that exists on all the road projects or public works projects. In the past, years back, we always did sod, then we kind of, I don't know where you came in, because, you know, that's one, two, three directors ago. With sod, then it went to hydroseed, which, in all the cases that I saw, it was a complete flop, not saying hydroseed doesn't work, just they didn't do it correctly or follow up. The same with seed and blanket, if they're not following up, and we don't have the ability to tell them to water, at what point do we just reassess our requirements and maybe go back to sod, because that, although that didn't eliminate issues, right, you'd have to replace a piece of sod, that was, my experience has been a better finished project compared to what I've seen in the last three, four years.
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
So we provided an update in the manager's report not long ago, we were considering that very same question. The last few projects, major projects, we haven't seen a high success rate with the hydroseed that we've been using. Sod has its own issues with, it looks great at first, but then if it doesn't get watered enough, it eventually shrinks and dies, so we were considering going back to, to seed and blanket, which is what many other utility companies use when they make their repairs, and then just redressing any areas that haven't taken the following spring or in the fall, or whenever it's ideal conditions for seed germination.
Good, follow up on that?
And this piggybacks on what the mayor said, and I, I've seen it, so I think part of the issue, whether it's the hydroseed, the blanket, or the sod, was the, the type or grade of dirt that they were putting out, down, and how many inches of that dirt, too. I mean, in the past, I've seen it look pretty terrible. I mean, that stuff I'd be raking up and throwing out. So are, are we going to be more proactive in looking, or we have to spec a different grade of soil?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, our soil spec is about as good as you can get. It's better than the I dot spec. It varies differently from load to load, even from the same supplier. We have had contractors come out and remove, you know, unsatisfactory soil and put down new soil in areas where we saw a lot of stones or sticks. I agree with you, that is a major problem that we're continuing to monitor, but I don't think we can write our spec really any better than, you know, fresh pulverized dirt with a certain amount of organic material.
All right, just asking, thank you.
I do have a question on that, though. So I know when we switched to this, we were doing some sod and, well, so if it's doing this stuff in the summertime, they had pallets of sod sitting by the project for a couple days in the 95 degrees, and the stuff was yellow, and then we're adding nitrogen and all this nonsense to it to try and make it greener. Should we be looking at maybe doing something in the spring, and, or as we do road projects, they have to come back and do it in the spring or in the fall, early fall, and would that be better? Because I'm hearing, oh, they didn't come in water, blah, blah, blah. Mr. Lang, I don't know, is that something we should look at?
Yeah, it's another thing we consider, was trying to time our road projects better as to where the end would line up with, you know, a, a timing when it's better for planting seed. Unfortunately, you're kind of at the mercy of the contractor's schedule when they're the low bidder, and the beginning of the season, you're, you're hit and miss with weather, so.
The guy, the projects that they did this year, let's say they finished up in September or, you know, late October, then we let them come out in the spring and do the grass instead of, you know, or if they're finishing up and we're doing it in June and July, let them wait till September. I mean, I'm just, because it always seems to end up the heat. So I always hear the heat, it's too hot, blah.
Well, we've seen this year, early in the season, May and June was hotter and drier than July and August, so sometimes you never know. I think the residents would rather have the, the restoration take place, and then, you know, any areas that don't take, we come back and reseed in those cooler climates. The contractor's responsible to ensure establishment of the landscaping, at least to a certain percentage, so they're required to come back at their own cost and touch up any areas that haven't taken.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, it seems like whichever we do, and I remember when we did sod, it's like the mayor said, this was on Montrose, I mean, it was, the grass, the sod was all dead. I mean, they left it out there. I mean, can't we get stricter on our requirements for like watering, or somehow monitor that better? Some tighter language in our contract?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, we can increase the supplemental waterings. I dot spec doesn't have any supplemental waterings for regular seeding. We've added that in, in this contract. We had 12 supplemental watering included in the, the bid price. Sod requires even more than that. If you've planted sod at your own house, you know, you have to water it during the hot season multiple times a day sometimes, so. Fortunately, it's not really realistic for us to get out there that often, or pay a contractor to get out there that often, which is why sometimes we rely on residents taking charge and watering themselves.
Alderman Ames?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Have we considered offering a watering credit to the residents if they water the sod that's, or grass seed that's put down, just to, you know, ballpark a number of-
Mr. Lang?
That sounds like it would be a policy decision for the council. I, I can't offer anyone a, a credit for, on their water bill for watering, so that's something to be discussed at the council.
Alderman Ames?
I mean, it could be turned back to the contractor, who's supposed to water.
And Mr. Bond is saying, no.
Yeah, I mean, you've already got the, the contract's already going to have watering requirements. If we have extreme heat like we've, we've seen, and we had a dry season, you know, that, that's not going to help that situation. I think it'd be difficult, and as, as Ms. Lang said, that would be a policy you would have to make, which your finance director might take issue with, trying to figure out, were they watering the, the affected area? Were they watering their yard? Were they filling their pool? How would you know which ones were impacted, which ones were affected? But it would be very difficult. I don't know there's a contractor who would accept that responsibility, because you have no control over that expenditure. So that would put us, probably restrict us from some of the, the better contractors who do a better quality work, may not be interested in, in undertaking that unknown expense.
Follow up, go ahead.
So I guess you would know if they were watering if the grass was growing, you know, you could tell if they're not watering it.
But then we'd be checking, like this year, we did many blocks, we'd be checking a few hundred homes, maybe more.
Just an idea to try to encourage.
Any other questions on the bills? All right, let's go, roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?